Good evening. I'd like to call the East Green Bush Central School District Board Meeting for October 29th, 2025 to order. Attendance, we're missing Mike and Cindy tonight. I believe everybody else is here. Okay. If we could all rise for a pledge. Okay, first up, we have Student Council.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello. So in the past few weeks, we have gotten a lot of feedback from Homecoming and Pap Rally. And a lot of people have said that it was a lot better than everything that's happened last year. They liked a lot of the changes and improvements we've made. So we're going to carry a lot of those into next year.
Can I move this? Okay, also, we have a Wear Pink Day tomorrow in support of breast cancer awareness. So we're really excited about that. And then on Friday, we're doing a senior Halloween parade for the first time. So during fifth period, seniors that are dressed up can parade around the school and wave to everybody, kind of like how it was in elementary school, just a quick chance for everybody to have a little bit of fun on Halloween.
Art Club recently, I believe, last Thursday, they set up their haunted hallway that they do every year. It looks great, looks amazing. Everyone's loving it and it's very fun and spooky.
And then the boys and girls soccer team are both participating in sectionals on Saturday.
And today, we had a group of students go to engage at Russell Sage College. I believe that they went to learn how to better, you know, improve the school environment and how to encourage everyone to be uplifting and positive.
So those are really exciting updates. That's all we have. Thank you, guys, and we're going to pass it back over to Dr. Coats.
Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie. So as many of you may be aware, we've just recently finished Board Recognition Week. And this is a time where we stop to reflect the dedicated service of all of our Board of Education members. As a reminder, while these are elected positions, these are also volunteer positions. And the countless hours that our board members give, not only here for formal meetings, but in conversations during committee meetings, things like capital improvement projects, when they come to our events, when they come to our concerts or shows, that time is far beyond what any of us see. And that dedication is what makes our school system as good and as strong as it is. We could not do what we do without the support of our Board of Education. We're so fortunate to have such a supportive and engaged board to make sure that everything that we need as educators, as teachers, as administrators, we have what we need to best service all of the students and the families in this community. So I'm going to turn it back to our Student Council to Natalie. They have a special presentation they would like to make to all of our board members and honor Board Recognition Week.
Thank you. So on behalf of Student Council and all of Columbia, thank you, guys, for everything that you do and all of your support. We had students paint pumpkins the past few weeks, so please feel free to take a pumpkin on your way out and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So with that, we do have some refreshments to honor our board rec- our board members during Board Recognition Week. We'll take maybe about a 10-minute break so that everyone can join and socialize and be able to say thank you to our board members.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. First up, approval of draft minutes from October 8. Any questions or comments? I think the only person missing last time was Mike, and he is not here, so we should all be good. Motion to approve RP. Second, Robert, all those in favor? Okay, Board Forum. What does that?
Okay, um, couple of different things. I wanted to start with wishing our boys and girls soccer teams are playing in the championships on Saturday. James, it's 11:00 in the morning, right, for the boys and four something at the girls? And we got the boys or the varsity football, yeah. And you guys are varsity footballs playing, so we got a lot of sectional stuff going on, so that's exciting times. Now to me, so I am now the NISBA delegate, and so there was a, we had a voting marathon a couple of weeks ago. It takes like four to five hours voting on all the resolutions. There were about 34 resolutions voted on and over those, then those will become the position statements for what the board will consider next year. And a lot of it is already done by then. So if we, what I'm, the reason I'm bringing it up is that you can see that on the, all the resolutions were brought by certain school districts. So if we find something that we find to be very important, one, it's, excuse me, it may already be there, but two, we should consider it. And just, I just wanted to keep that up. I'm going to continue on that, because, continue on with this. We went to the conference and I just want to thank the, the district for allowing us to go. Because I found it to be amazingly helpful as a new board member, very informative, glad I went, glad we went, got to meet, you know, a bunch of people. And so some of the sessions I went to was being an advocate for with NISBA, learned a lot about that and going to try to get more involved, you know, if the district wants me to, but I hope we can continue on that path, go into advocacy day, pressuring there. But just really quick, some of the last, some of the classes I, or sessions I went to, one was on cell phones, which we already know about, but there was one I went on athletic inclusion, how we should treat all athletes, was really interesting, really helpful. I'm going to send around the slides of everything I went to, so you can see them. More uni- more unified sports, in fact, they were talking about bocce is now unified sport, really cool, pushing some of those things. And then I went to a session called, you know, how to ask a question. And I found it to be really informative for two reasons. One, there's, I'm going to extend this around to there's a handout, five ways to ask a question and how to get there. It's really what, when, why, how and why. But to be more, you know, as a team, which we've already focused on. And what I found most interesting is that we were able to do breakout sessions. So it would be, you know, Kathy and I from different school districts talking about how we worked and how we do things and how they did things. So it was more to me a reassuring that what we're doing is what other districts are doing. And in fact, how we actually have a trust in our president. I mean, it's like, there's some that don't have any faith in their president and they were talking about how they want to communicate directly with the president. So I found that to be interesting. I also went on stuff on state aid and tax levy stuff. And so now I'm, in those two sessions, I'm now an expert in if Jen has questions and we need to help her. And then finally, it was on zero emission buses. Just, we all know it, we're, they know there's a lot that needs to be done on that, but moving forward and buying some of these buses isn't a bad thing. Because, you know, we're getting a lot of state aid on those. Will we meet that condition? No one will meet the condition, the condition by 2035. But again, through NISBA and advocacy, we're hoping to continue on that. That was it. Sorry. But it was really good. I'm glad I went.
I have a few quick comments. I was very excited to see the budget calendar posted, thinking about that early. I did have a ask about how do we get the PTOs involved, thinking of like, like last year with Janay and how that happened. So still thinking about like, we spoke about like the timeline, the best time to advocate for certain schools or resources and how that process look, I think, engaging the PTOs, making sure they're aware as early as possible, inviting them to have a part in that calendar would be excellent. So, so that, you know, they could be involved in a process. I'm still going to continue with the meeting minutes transcription electronically, I think would be a great and relatively simple change. You know, just in, and I don't, I don't know that meeting minutes is all that. When I say meeting minutes, we are required to have meeting minutes, that is like how we vote on motions. I don't know we are required to relate what the sentiment around the conversation, but even so, I think there's software that takes video, changes it to words in an automated fashion. I'd be curious if, you know, how that would look and I'd be curious if our director, Mr. Goodwin, had any thoughts around that. And I want to continue also on the AI vibe coding. I think that's, that would be a great idea for a club. I think it would be very timely and I think when we're thinking about integrating AI into the curriculum and thinking about, you know, utilizing one of our most powerful resources, our students who have a lot more time. My daughter's probably spent three to four hours a day practicing their instrument and three to four hours a day on their device, right? I think less hours on it. But, but, and this is a better way to spend time on the device. I always tell them like, hey, if you, if you could figure out a way to make money on it, right? We're doing a lot better than just playing Roblox all day. So I love the idea of an AI vibe coding club or some kind of way to get students more involved on the AI and help us build out that framework. I'll save the rest for later. Thank you so much. Try not to share a link here.
I wanted to say to everyone that I am really excited to announce that in December, hopefully before our break for the holidays, I'm going to be presenting an analysis of the data that I collected in my student survey on the cellphone band. So I'm really excited about that. Thank you.
I too was very grateful that the district supported our trip to the NISBA conference and had a few words to say. Should I do that now or did we want to save that for? Okay, great. Yeah. So yeah, thank you again to the district. You know, as a new board, new board member, the, the conference was super helpful. I mean, NISBA offers a 12-hour training, but that just kind of touches the surface. Whereas the conference was really a chance to look at current issues, look at them in depth and to meet people across the state. I went to sessions that included presentations by teachers. So Vesting Central School District had a presentation on a vertically aligned curriculum model where they're doing bilingual literacy, biliteracy program, the Blue Ribbon Biliteracy Program, which we do in our district too at the high school level. And they have a model where they've instituted it in eighth grade and fifth grade. And so it was really exciting to see the way that teachers, principals, administrators were all coming together on this, on this project. I too was at the session with the Director of the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, which oversees high school athletics and learned about the support they offer from the rules at games to guidance in helping students with disabilities achieve in athletics. We got to meet people from the Department of Education and even though they're just over the river and down the road a little bit, you don't normally get to meet them face to face, like Dr. Diane Nguyen from, from State Ed, who was talking about inclusion and disability. And there are a number of attorneys presenting. It helped to give an overview of understanding contract law, how do we fulfill special education requirements? There was one session where they talked about IDEA, which is the law where we develop the individualized learning plans in relation to that Section 405, 504, rather, the Anti-Discrimination Act. So learning about how to help families in our district, how to comply with law for special education. And one of the things I think is really important about the, the conference is you're really getting current information. So they were discussing case law that happened just over the last year that I'm happy to share, you know, with fellow board members in the, in the district as well. And I saw, I went to a session on Communications 101 where I learned, what a great job Mr. Adam does for our district, because it's like, oh, that's everything he's doing that we're doing. And these are the reasons why, those are the best practices. So I have a better understanding. So, yeah, I learned a lot. I have 28 pages of notes that when we, we knew we were going to talk about this, I was like, oh my God, how am I going to summarize all this? So yeah, I know it'll certainly form my work. I'm happy to share those notes with fellow board members as, as Mr. Pnashe was saying, but we have some of the slides. And while we were there, we were somewhat strategic about, you know, there are a lot of concurrent sessions, so splitting up. Often when I was torn, should I go to this session or that? If I knew some other board members were already attending something, then I would go to something else so that we could, we could share notes at the end and hopefully be, you know, very efficient and productive that way. So, so thank you again. It was a really great experience and I look forward to taking what I've learned as I continue to serve the district.
If I could just jump in, I just wanted to comment to about the delegate voting piece specifically. So, so, so the delegate voting, like the NISBA voting is about like kind of directing statewide. Like, like how do you help provide the resources to districts statewide? So, so they have a process of coming up with resolutions to kind of promote certain, certain propositions. So I think, I think it would be a great opportunity if we had an initiative to, to actually, you know.
And you're on, you, you work with the DEI Committee?
Yes.
I didn't know that. I don't know if anyone else, yeah.
Absolutely. So, so, so the resolutions, before they go to the Resolutions Committee, the DEI Committee has a subcommittee that reviews all of the resolutions that says, do this have a DEI component? And if so, do the DEI Committee support or, or is neutral? Or reject the resolution? So, so all those 30 something resolutions, I had a session where we went through all of them. And then we meet with the broader DEI Committee and from there we get the committee consensus before they move forward. But the Resolutions Committee makes the decision on whether NISBA is going to pass the resolution or not. But, but any delegate could actually create a resolution, but yeah, so, but I just wanted to say that it's a great opportunity. And that's, that's what I want to kind of piggyback on, like within this book conferences that like to be able to have an opportunity to get with leaders statewide, right? Because sometimes, you know, when you're in your district, you kind of have a district perspective. So I think when you kind of see and talk to others about what's going on statewide, challenges that occurred, it really helps when it, when it comes to even think about resolutions, because the Resolutions Committee is made up of people from every single area. So, so what will they support? What won't they support? I think NISBA conferences kind of give you that lens of where kind of state education is broadly. And that's, that's one of my favorite things. I just want to just say also, one of my favorite things is getting to know everyone kind of outside of, from the board table, you know, and just, you know, seeing what drives them, you know, their volunteerism, their values, how they look at things. I think those are all invaluable time. And I think also, you know, just, just being able to look at board service from, from, from a broad perspective, but I just wanted to say.
Okay. Moving on to the public forum. Residents, students, employees and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and our operations of the district, other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the Chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and will be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. No one? Okay. All right, reports and presentations, capital project.
So I'm going to invite our partners from Turner and LaBella forward to give us some updates on the current status of our capital improvement project. We have a great amount of work that is starting to begin at Goff and some other sectors in the district. They're going to give some updates on where all that work stands. Thomas, I'll turn it right over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Coats. There we go. So give everybody an update on the Phase 1 construction, which happened here at Columbia High School. Same as, as we before, both the tennis courts and the exterior basketball courts, they're all completed. The rest of the erosion control measures have been taken out. And there is just one last grass cutting to be done. And then we can officially turn that over. As far as the roof goes, we, the last couple of weeks, we have finished up all the new access ladders, all the new roof hatches are on, complete with safety rails and all the punchless work is, is done. And right now we are efforting to do our final walkthrough with the manufacturer next week. So that will make, that'll put us past substantial completion. Moving on to Phase 1B at Goff, pretty exciting stuff. We cleared all the trees earlier this, this month. I don't know if anybody drove by there and saw the large machines chewing up 40-foot long trees, but that's, that's all completed now. The new access road footprint is installed. We did our proof roll on Friday. We took care of the, any spots that were soft. With that, this week, I started placing a crush, crusher run from the Goff Middle School side. And we realigned the temporary fence and they started stripping the top, top soil where the new football turf, sports field and six-lane track will go. So right now, just to look ahead, next week, we have Musco scheduled. They will be here at some point next week to start installing the foundations for the new sports lighting. So we'll get those done and then we're hoping, weather pending mid, by mid-December, they're going to, they're going to hang the mass and put the lights up. At the same, same time, while we're finishing up the FFL and starting our underground drainage work. So product project is, is moving ahead quite well. Moving on to budget, as part of our content, our contingency for Phase 1A, nothing has changed. We still have a remaining contingency of $49,953.02. So there's been no changes, no additional change, change orders there. So we're, we're there. For Phase 1, 1B, the contract has a contingency amount of $160,000 and there's, it's way too early to even think about using any of those funds right now. As far as our construction budget summary from our previous meeting, nothing has changed. So between our pre-ref budget amount for Phase 1A and 1B, we had a total of 16.3 million roughly. Our award amounts were just over 14 million. So right now we have a positive delta of 2.3 million. So everything's looking very, very well. And then the next piece, so now we're going to start moving. So Phase 2 is we are going to advertise for bids on November 12. We will have a pre-bid walkthrough at both Goff and Middle School and Red Mill Elementary on November 18. But we are going to accept bids on December 11. And we'll level those over the holidays. And then when you come back on January 14th, after your, your holiday break, we'll be ready to present our low bids and hopefully get those accepted and start work at Goff Middle School, February 16th, which is winter break. I'm now going to turn it over to Devin Tellberg with LaBella.
So as a reminder, this is the main entrance, front edition at Goff Middle School that we're proposing. And we are currently developing the construction details for. Earlier this month, our design team met with staff at Goff Middle School and we presented our interior designs for some of the more renovated spaces. What you're seeing here is inside the vest wheel when you go through the front doors with a separate visitor lobby for secure access. As you walk into the main office, what you're seeing is a front desk with some access to the visitor check-in on the left and more offices around the corner. As part of the renovation of the locker room areas and we are adding a new music classroom to the same area of rooms in that section. And we proposed some designs and opening up some skylights in the roof. In the locker rooms themselves, we proposed some blue lockers and some new access around. And also some new renovated library space at Green Meadow. We were inspired by introducing more meadows into some of the graphics. And that's it for me. Thank you.
What phase is the?
This is Phase 3.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so we're in construction documentation.
Oh, so Phase?
Phase 2 is ahead.
And it's Goff as well, partially Goff?
Goff Library is Phase 2. The rest of Goff is included in Phase 3.
If Phase 2 was starting this coming February, if Phase 3 is going to start approximately next year.
The following February, he says.
So you do design like this and then you turn it into the draw, like?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What do I do?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, please continue.
I know. Finish it.
Oh, I was, I don't know how to turn the presentation up, so.
Yeah.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I have just a couple of budget questions. The, what exactly does encumbrances outstanding mean?
So those are committed contracts. So for example, this report reflects activity through September.
Okay.
So the Phase 1B contracts, the work behind Goff was awarded at the end of August and those contracts were executed in September. So if you looked at the August report versus the September report, you would see on that second line, Phase 1B, that those encumbrances increased substantially. So that basically means we've committed that portion of the budget through contracts.
Yep. And then the, I guess my question is, would it be possible or appropriate on this sheet to just have a, like a couple, add a couple of very high-level columns to just give us a quick?
A definition sheet?
No, just like sort of a yay, yay or nay, on time, on budget? And then maybe even like percent complete? It's just so we can sort of see like the full picture of based on kind of initial budget, revised budget, just how things and like, it does 1.2 million remaining? Like, are we going to, is that going to get us there?
Yes. So for example, so right, so we can add some more.
Yeah, just again, very rough. These presentations are really helpful. I think just if we could have like one thing of just to like orient our eyes of like, hey, you know, we've got things out of control, like we've supply chain issues, other things, material problem, you know, issues. If we could just sort of see like, yep, like, and again, just a yes or no, we're on track, on budget, percent completed, I think would be really helpful for our level.
Yeah, absolutely. And actually Turner assists us with understanding the percent complete picture as well. So.
Like ROMs, not like, you know, rough order of magnitude, not necessarily like to, to a crisp, I think would just be helpful. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, this is, it's beautiful. Like it's.
I, I, I do want to add, I love the 2.3 million dollars under budget figure. I definitely saw that number. Standing out there. I think, I think in general, I mean, and I love to also see like how the contingency, and I know the contingency, you're saying we're, we're still early on the one, but I love to see that, 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 that figure kind of, and, and on the other one, we had, we had like $40,000 left on, on the phases, but I definitely enjoyed the work. I definitely hear, hear the snapshot view, like, like just, just how do we represent to the public broadly? I think it's all there. I think we're just talking presentation, you know, so that is.
Yeah. So one of the things I can add, like that construction budget slide is really representing where we are with construction. So that's basically telling us like what that amount is left over at this point in time. And then the contingency information with the change orders is reflecting what we're utilizing of built-in contingencies within the budget. In addition, at the time of that, contracts are awarded as a result of the low bids. There'll be a discussion about where is this, you know, in relation to budget, because that's going to be very important. There's several phases that we can comment through estimates that Turner does all the way through different sets of design that LaBella is working on, where budgets are constantly being adjusted and modified based on the design plans. So there's a lot of monitoring going on, but like identifying, for example, like Phase 1A, we're pretty much done. So there's just a few things hanging out there and it's mainly in incidental costs.
Yeah.
But you can see that just based on that remaining unencumbered balance, I mean, there will be soft costs that are still coming through, but the construction is done and, you know, the contingency reflection is pretty much just about where we'll end up. The contingency reflection is pretty much just about where we'll end up, so.
I think it's helpful for us. I also think if like if there is a version of that available on the web or, you know, just to even, you know, this is a lot of money for our taxpayers. They were very generous, just even show like, it's a great selling point. We're on, we're under budget, we're, you know, being really good stewards of dollars. I think that's huge and. Jen, I assume if we do have savings in certain phases and then run into, is it easy to? Like, you can sort of shift money to look lower phases if you needed to.
So that'll that'll be a broader discussion. It all comes down to the project scope that was, um, approved by the voters.
Yep.
As to whether or not we can do additional things or expand on some of the work that.
Or even if there's more, I'm, yeah, I was even just thinking of like, you know. Sort of an unanticipated issue, it's pretty, is it easy to apply savings or does that? Kind of flexibility do we have?
Yeah, okay.
You just, you need to be mindful, uh, and we go back to the word that Jen just talked about, you need to be mindful of what scope. Was defined in the original.
Yep, I'm not asking about going out of scope, I'm just saying, yep, yep. Construction costs are much more than they probably. Were even before, yeah.
One one more question too. So 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 not only are we are we under budget right now, but one A originally was projected to take longer, wasn't it? Like, I know, like, we were talking about, like, the roof going into next year, so, yeah.
Yes, the, uh, the original roof project was scheduled to take two seasons. Um, working with our contractor, the roof roofing contractor, they wanted to get it done. So they actually tripled their their personnel on the roof. And we were able to work weekends and holidays and just get it done. So that was, it was a good part partnership there to finish that.
That that was amazing, because I just remember like when we were first talking about it, you were wondering like, are we really gonna have it done this year? This is amazing that we got it under budget ahead of schedule and I I just, I just think that is great. And I think that's exactly what you're saying. It's like, how do we kind of bring that out? That we're we're ahead of schedule, under budget, like just out from a from a high level, because because it's great work being done. I totally, totally get that.
Mark, we we asked Mr. Adam, I mean, generically, we should have a conversation about it, but it could be, I mean. It's obviously on the web, but it's very hard to get to, right? And so it's pushing it out there to the public in an easier forum.
Yeah.
Great. Moving on, Red Mill Sanitary Sewer Emergency Project.
So I'm gonna invite Mr. Bickle forward. As many of you may already be aware. Uh, we have an unforeseen condition that has arisen in Red Mill Elementary School that we've been dealing with now for the better part of about three to four weeks. That La Bella and Turner have been partnering with the school district on coming up with a solution. Mr. Bickle is gonna give a high level overview of what has transpired, what we're looking at, and then the pathway on that we're trying to chart forward. To try to address what has occurred. So Mr. Bickle, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. So they only get called to talk when there's bad news, so I am part of the capital project. So on October third, I got a call that, um. Red Mill had two rooms that the sinks were overflowing, two rooms located in the downstairs. Um, back wing. Um. These two sinks unfortunately were sanitary sewers, um, backing up through the sinks. Because they were at their lowest point and there was a, uh, plug in the main drain. That was, um, basically between rooms thirty two and thirty three. Uh, so we brought in. Our typical, um, person to jet out the lines and clean it up. Um, just for historical values, since I've been here, um, seven, almost eight years. This has happened, uh, probably two times before. Seems like every couple of years it happens and when they. Actually get in there and jet it out, it's items that shouldn't have been flushed down the toilet. Um, things that don't dissolve. Lots of things I don't want to talk about, but, um, things that should not be flushed in the toilet. And, um, unfortunately, uh, we were at that time. Under the assumption that it. That cleaning had, uh, resolved the issue, so we moved ahead and, um. We brought in quick response to clean and sanitize those two classrooms. Because we wanted them to be as clean as possible for the students, uh, to return and just for the state line for teachers and parents. Anyone in that in those rooms. Um, so that happened and, um. We were able to put the, put them back in there. Uh, unfortunately, a a couple of weeks later, I believe it was the sixteenth. I got another call that the, um. The sinks were overflowing again, this time in four classrooms. So, um, the the two original ones and then two farther down the line. Um. The teachers caught it a little bit sooner, so we were able to get some equipment there. Um, vacuum type equipment, shampoos, anything that will suck or remove water. And we were able to constantly, we had a a crew, I brought some people over from other schools, some equipment from other schools. And we were very able to constantly keep sucking it out of the sinks, um. Until it settled down. Thank goodness, uh, that day they were out, the kids were outside for most part. But, uh, unfortunately, we knew they were coming back in soon and they were going to need to use the restroom. We didn't wanna. Pause any commotion for that, so we 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 prepared for it and sure enough, um. You know, we went through and the guys racking out the sinks again, um, only lasted for a short time. Thankfully, that was towards the end of the day. Um, so school did not need to be closed at time, um. On the third, unfortunately, school did need to be closed, um. So I believe they dismissed a little after twelve one o'clock, I forget the exact time. Um, so definitely a disruptive. Part of, uh, and and something that, you know. We don't want to have happen, um, things like this are unforeseen, um. I looked through the D C S, the Building Condition Survey, which was done in twenty twenty two. And when I looked at Red Mill Sanitary Sewer Line, it said that it was in satisfactory condition. And that it had a useful life of at least fifteen years left on it, so it was not brought forward as part of this capital project. Um. So where we're at, um. My guys, uh, rebuilt a couple of the sinks in there. Uh, with some new vanities, just to kind of sp- clean it up a little bit and. You know, make it feel like a fresher environment. Um, and then we, when the second spill happened, we had to do the same thing in the other two rooms. They were farther down the line, so it kind of backed up. And we weren't, there was a second when we could, weren't able to keep up with it. It just barely overflowed, but unfortunately it did overflow. So. Uh. This company that I had been using, uh, wasn't able to get there. And I tried, tried and tried, so I called, um, we got got ahold of the town and asked them for somebody else that maybe to get there sooner. They came over and, um. They jetted out the line and, um, they were able to pull a lot more material out. Um, and then they decided they wanted to come back because they didn't think they had enough, so they came back on Monday. Um, it was a planned event for three thirty, but. Lo and behold, the the, uh, sink started to back up again towards the end of that day, so. They got there, they actually cut an opening in the main drain, which is a six inch cast iron line. And, um, when they started cleaning it out, they noticed extremely bad scaling. Um, basically what that is, in old cast iron lines, they, um. They deteriorate from the inside out, so they start to be, they start to, you know, basically rust. Um, and all those different pieces in there, they can fall off and cheats, um. But it is a never, once it starts and once you're at that point, the sewer is, system is beyond useful life. Because there's no way to go in and do anything about it, um. So come to today, um, we've had several, uh. Several discussions with our architectural team and, um, construction team. On how to go about this and I know, um, for parents, students, teachers, administrators. Everybody alike, um, they're looking for answers and we are trying to give them answers. We, um. Have taken this obviously very seriously and, um, we are at a point where. We had to bring in, um, the engineering firm through La Bella to really walk and find out. How big of a scope this was, when they did that, they found that, um. Basically, the old lines from the building from nineteen thirties when it was built were undersized. Um, so you have that to contend with initially. Most of the lines up in the front, um, for those of you that are familiar with plumbing. Are just four inch lines, which is pretty much the standard size of what goes out of your house and. You're talking about twelve to fifteen toilets running through that. Plus, it's got the condition of the scaling inside of it and that's all coming down and converging into the six inch line. Which takes everything out of the building, um. And unfortunately. It's just come to a point to where we don't feel that there's gonna be any kind of temporary repair. That is gonna last years. Um, I do have my crew, um, we put together, uh. Uh, La Bella gave us a short term list on things we could do to hopefully rectify it temporarily until we could get a full solution. So we are gonna be replacing about sixty foot of the worst section where everything's getting caught down in in this, in the, uh. A crawl space this weekend and we're gonna be adding some additional venting to that line. So that will hopefully buy us a little bit of time, um. Not sure and nobody has a crystal ball, so we don't know. But a- at this point, that is everybody's best guess as to a remedy that can last. Till we can get to that. Whole point of what really needs to happen is a full replacement of all the pipes throughout the building. Um, Red Mill unfortunately in the past has suffered from a lot of vandalism up on the roof. So many of the, the lines up there, the vents are jamfold of rocks from students. Um, so venting in the school itself for the sanitary system is, um, a problem to begin with. And, um. Unfortunately, like I say, this was completely unforeseen. We had, uh, in the capital project, we had planned to. And we have planned to replace all the sinks in all the back, in all the classrooms in the back wings upstairs and down. And we are also, um, adding a couple of new sinks and bathrooms in the front part of the building. Um, unfortunately, we can't do that into a system that is, um. In such poor shape.
Quick, quick question, Paul.
Yeah.
Um, so I I know Red Mill has, and I'm wondering, is this related, I know we had like some smells like some years ago and I I know. Like you've been saying that that we've had a bunch of temporary fixes, it's time to start looking at a permanent fix. I think that makes complete sense.
Yeah.
Um, and and I know that this has been a reoccurring challenge. What I'm hearing is, it sounds like, um, you're looking at. A two phased approach to a permanent solution, one, a short term to alleviate the immediate pain of of what's going on. And then a longer term, and I'm just wondering if you could kind of build out both pieces, like when you say short term. Like, like, like timing, right? Like, is there any idea of budget at this time? When we think full scale, like, 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 what is any obstacle that getting away of full scale? When can that happen? I'm wondering like details wise, because because I I don't think that there's any disagreement that we need to get this done. But the question is, what exactly are we talking about when we're thinking short term one and then longer term two and how does both pieces look?
Yep, so I'll go through that. Um, we did bring in several contractors to walk through also and put together, um, some information. And some temporary, temporary repair quotes similar to what my guys are gonna be doing. But not, my guys are not gonna be doing quite as much, um. And they were in the forty five to fifty thousand dollar range. We had one to replace all the pipes in the lower, um, crawl space under that section and. That's not anything else but just replacing the pipes down there and that was a hundred thousand dollars, so. We didn't want to throw money at something that technically needed to come back out. Because it was sized and it was gonna be sized improperly.
Do do we have any idea like on the bigger term, longer term solution, like scope wise? Like, like, what stands in the way of getting that going immediately? Like, what time is needed? Why is time needed in any type? Of range yet of of what that would look like?
Yeah, so, um. Again, it's, this has been kind of a a mind bender for everybody, um. We've got a couple of situations, um. We've got a capital project going on right now and in phase, this phase, Red Mill is literally was prepared to go out to bid very soon. Um, so there is discussion, there is feasible language built into the, um. To the vote. That could allow this to happen, um, in the capital project and. There is already one piece, um, that is in the capital project, so where the playground is, the old. Sewer runs diagonally underneath it. We had already planned on replacing and going out and around. That pipe is six inch pipe. They say we need to upsize to an eight inch pipe. So basically from the municipality connection, which is in the back corner by the gate and behind the playground. Um, all the way up to the building would need to be replaced with eight inch line. And that is already accounted for in the project as part of the site work. Which, again, further complicates things because, yes, we had some of this in there, but not all of it. The second piece now is the whole interior piece where. All the six inch lines need to be turned into eight inch lines, all the four inch lines need to be upsized into six inch lines. And all the vents need to be replaced because they're all blocked. I know that you mentioned the odors and we believe that this could be a part of it with. The blockage of the, uh, the ventilation and stuff in there. So we're at a, we're at a point right now where we, um. Just want to kind of give the board the information that we have. Um, we really need everybody's input on it, um. Thinking together on best, how best to solve this.
I I have another quick question.
Yeah.
And and this one is 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 from Miss Mulligan, thinking about, because I'm thinking the full scale fix. Sounds to me like it would be a lot more expensive and it might mess with the reimbursement schedule. Of how we currently plan and we might have to rethink how that, I was I was just curious if you had anything on that, like, like. Thinking long term solution, would there have to be any more work done on the reimbursement side, how we phase out projects? We have some, um. Like, I know we have to scale it in a certain way that we maximize our reimbursements. I was just wondering if that's a, that's a part of this at all or or we're not looking at.
Um, we we haven't looked at that yet, but just in the big picture of things on the hundred and sixteen million dollar project. It's, this is probably a smaller percentage, so I don't anticipate any impact on that, but we haven't made any decisions as to exactly how this is gonna work. This is, we're still early in design, we're still looking at, we don't have all of those answers yet.
All right.
Just, just to add to what Mr. Bickle shared just yesterday. La Bella submitted to the district a new schematic drawing of the entire infrastructure. So it literally went in the hands of the district and the construction manager yesterday. So we, while we are pushing as fast as we can, it it's, we need time. And to get accurate, I know we're asking for prices, we can't give you a number yet on what the fix is. What we're hearing from La Bella. We have to replace the system, soup to nuts, the vents, the piping, the main drain out to what was already incorporated in the capital project. But now that those drawings are in the hands of Turner, we just need a little bit more time for Turner to do their work to. But now that those drawings are in the hands of Turner, we just need a little bit more time for Turner to do their work to come back and say, this is what the budget can look like, so then we can move to those next conversations on, okay, how do we finance this? I don't wanna come with artificial or made up numbers right now because we just don't have.
But we need to, we don't need to authorize Paul to do what he's doing this weekend.
No, no, that, that can happen.
Yeah, no, this is happening in-house with our in-house meeting group. Yeah, it was, it was a way of getting things done. You know, that we need done at a cost that we can afford under, under the operations and maintenance budget at this point.
And, and a good portion of that came out of the recommendations from the engineer at La Bella. Additional venting, some one-way valves, so that if we do get another backup, it prevents it from going into the classroom. So those are things that Paul said we can handle temporarily until we have the larger design and a budget for how we're going forward. We are pushing as fast as we can, but we just, it, it can't happen overnight. This, this is not replacing a trap under your sink, this is the entire sewer system.
Let's hope this works.
Short.
Short term.
Yeah, we also decided to invest in a pipe camera so that we can kind of monitor it ourselves. Before it gets to the point where it's backing up and sinks again, God forbid it should get there, so. Having that camera, it's about a three hundred and fifty foot pipe camera that will be able to
Yeah.
run through there and monitor what's going on. And unfortunately, the, the section of pipe that was cut out when they put in a clean out so they could clean both ways. I have it in back of my truck. It's in very bad shape and you can actually see the thickness of the original pipe was about five sixteenths to three eighths of an inch. And the areas that are heavily corroded are down to about three sixteenths of an inch. So not only is it blocked inside, but it's structurally could collapse technically. Obviously, it's hold, held up by hangers and stuff like that. That's not our immediate concern. Our immediate concern is flow. But there's just
Yeah.
Everything points to the system needs to be repaired.
Dr. Coats, Ms. Turner, is, is there anything that you need from us at this moment? Is this just like a board information update? Anything you need from the board on this at this time?
So the one thing we have to keep in mind is hopefully within the next week, we will have a budget framework from Turner. That will help to inform us as a district administration on what recommendations we can make to the board. That may precipitate at that time where we need your support with different actions. At this time, it, it's, we're running as fast as we can, but we just don't have all the information in hand yet.
Okay, perfect. We appreciate, we definitely appreciate all the work. Appreciate, just turn that camera off at lunchtime. This whole show works in the short term, but no, we definitely look forward to it. Sure.
So, so I wanna take just a couple of minutes. This has been a very challenging situation to deal with, and when the first call came from Mrs. Colachi, we got over there as quickly as we could, and I have to say, beyond the odor, when you have brown water backing up in the classrooms, I want to applaud our faculty, our staff, the way they behaved, the way they dealt with the students. And the, the ongoing, hate to use this word, but the residual of now that we somewhat have the situation at least monitored and under control. Students have been looking in the sinks, is it gonna come back again? Just, just that unanticipated. What's going to happen? Our staff, our building level leadership has really been dealing with it as best they can, and they're to be applauded and thanked for that as well. Beyond that, the team that Mr. Bickle pulled over more than once now to have to clean this up. It, it's a very challenging situation to deal with, with things like this, both inside the building, the work they've been doing in the crawl space. These, these are just challenging issues to deal with. The team has responded, they've reacted. Mrs. Mulligan went right to the building with me, we were ready to pull the trigger on whatever we needed to do to, to keep things moving. The, the leadership team, the faculty, the staff has really come together to, to deal with really a, a very difficult, challenging situation. The students have behaved, spent hours with Mrs. Colachi in that building watching the way that the students behave. Sure, they're curious, why are all these adults here? Why are they standing in that hallway? But they really have done a great job in getting through a challenging situation. We wanna get this cleaned up, we want the teachers, we want the students to have that security in their classrooms. But for the time being, they're, they're really coming together as a, a great school community to get through this, and they're gonna be applauded for that, so. Mr. Bickle to the team, Mrs. Mulligan, Mrs. Colachi, all of our faculty and staff, thank you for, for really taking a good step for this.
Anybody have any other questions? Hey, so, uh, like Dr. Coats said, we will be back in touch shortly as soon as we have the next batch of information that we need to make decisions.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion items, uh, budget calendar and district vote for twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven.
So before I turn it over to Mrs. Mulligan, in earlier conversations, one of the clear messages that we had discussed and what we had heard from the board was regarding starting our budget process earlier and looking for ways to try to unpack what is going to promise to, to be yet another very challenging fiscal and budget year compounded by situations like we're dealing with now. So what we have done is tried to back up as much information that we have flexibility on at the district level to be able to start this budget process earlier. Education for the board, yes, your, your one, your one session makes an expert, we really wanna make an expert, so. We're, we're gonna try to work towards education, we're gonna try to work towards really familiarizing you, not only with the budget process, but then drill down into some historical perspective of the budget as well. Again, some pieces are anchored by regulation, but the pieces that we could move, we really tried to move a little bit earlier. This is a draft, we can talk about any pieces that we are proposing here. Again, I would recommend that we discuss those changes tonight and look for approval soon. But we wanna make sure that you have an opportunity to hear what we're proposing. We can reconcile any changes that you'd like to see and then be able to get this back to you in the future for approval so that we can start the budget planning process. It's hard to say for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, so. That, Mrs. Mulligan, I'm gonna turn it over to you to walk us through the proposal.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Dr. Coats. Okay, so annually, uh, boards of education are required to adopt a budget calendar that basically takes us through the entire budget season. Um, so that's what we're doing now, we're discussing that budget calendar and perhaps at the next meeting, November twelfth, be able to adopt that calendar. Last year was the first year the district brought forth a budget orientation workshop, it was, uh, mid-January uh, last year. Um, we're gonna continue to do that, um, and we're looking to bring it earlier, you know, we have new board members and, um, so, uh, we're gonna be doing that the next meeting, high level overview, um, of the budget workshop. We're not gonna be bringing back state aid planning to dive deep into the foundation aid again, but kind of give a broad overview of just certain terms, um, things that you would see, um, going through the budget. Um, then, um, we will start the work of, uh, issuing our, our budget builders, where our departments and working with our programs on that at the December meeting. So obviously, there's, um, a lot of talk about our blueprint, strategic plan, and you know, all those priorities that are listed in there. So part of the conversation in December would be to be guiding what's the board direction for that budget development. And that strategic plan may help guide that. Going into January, this is another item that is early, uh, the district hasn't rolled out. Traditionally, the district, I understand, has, uh, really not rolled out pieces of the budget until March, um, previously. What we will be able to do is, um, in January, take a look at the salary and benefits, employee benefits budget based on our current programs. So what that means is taking our current staffing levels, bringing that forward, applying contractual increases, applying what we know, you know, with health insurance increases, retirement system contribution, those pieces still preliminary, but to give you, um, an initial snapshot of what that piece would look like. And especially since it's close to eighty percent of our budget, that, that's a pretty big component to help provide some additional information of where things are looking from that perspective. Um, the governor's, uh, budget state aid runs do not come out until mid-January. So we will not have any picture of what state aid looks like at that point in time. Also, there's certain statutory information in terms of the tax levy cap, which is what allows us how high the tax levy can go be without exceeding it. Um, so there's certain points of information that do not come out until, um, late December, January timeframe. In February, we'd be looking to provide the current year, how is the current year looking? Like twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, where, how are things looking? How are things are progressing? Obviously, we have a, a budget, um, for twenty-five, twenty-six, but things change, the budget is a plan. So we'll take a look at what those projections are looking like. Again, everything is preliminary, things change as we go along, but it's just to provide some information to see how things are going. We are required by March first to file our tax cap calculation, so we'll go over the, of the tax cap calculation a little bit at the November twelfth, uh, budget orientation, just so you can have an understanding of some of the different components in there, uh, just to have some familiarity with some terms that we'll be talking about over the next several months. Basically, when we get into March, that is, um, basically normal budget flow process. So that is when, um, the first, uh, budget workshop is basically the superintendent's draft budget that's presented. And there'll be discussions about that, um, adjustments that the board is looking for. Um, and then we'll go through a second and third budget workshop with reiterations of, of the budget throughout, uh, the month of March. This budget calendar also includes information about, um, just the board elections and, um, when petitions are due. What the legislation, when the, uh, state budget enactment date is April first. When we're required to adopt our budget, we have it scheduled for April fifteenth. However, the latest, um, statutorily that we can adopt it is April twenty-first. So there's some just basic information to be able to understand, um, what the timeline is on that. And then also about, uh, candidate petitions or due dates, um, campaign notices, um, when we draw for the ballot position, all of that information and public, doing the legal notice for the budget. That's all draw, laid out, um, on that calendar and basically from April down, that's all statutorily driven those dates as to when they need to occur. So, um, so we, we are able to start certain pieces of this, um, earlier. Um, and obviously we'll be working with our programs, um, over the, the next several months on.
One question, go ahead if you got one. Just, um, other than the, not a criticism, but the first day, the only thing that well, let me put it this way, is the only thing that changed the first meeting or are there other things in here that are earlier, later?
There's, um, two primary things that are earlier, the budget orientation workshop and, um, the staffing and employee benefit.
Okay, yeah.
Which, which typically you wouldn't have seen anything until March.
Yeah, and, and so the reason we can't have a first budget workshop is because we, you need everything. This is from my understanding too, is like, so you cannot say we want a budget, a first budget in February because we don't have everything yet.
Right, yeah.
So I, I just wanna make a quick comment, um, and it's not exactly directly related to the budget. But, but, you know, because the thing is, the, the budget got a life of its own, and I think that this meeting is like the start of like a season, like, so, so, so I think it's very important, um, you know, to kind of keep an eye on all of the big items that the board has on the radar. Cause I think once we start hitting, right, November, we got one meeting, right? And then we're immediately effectively into budget season. And that's aside from all the other objectives that the board has for this year, going right up into elections, into like April, May. You know, like, like it'll be June thirtieth before we know it effectively, right? That, that's, that's assuming everything is smooth, it'll be here quicker, right? If anything goes wrong. But, but I just say that to say that time is really about to start flying, so I think really keeping a sharp eye, this budget calendar is very critical. But also all of the objectives that the board has, that the superintendent has, um, that we're planning for transition with, with everything like under the sun, right? Cause this budget is gonna take up so much time and space. I think it's gonna be important to keep this on the radar and everything else, and I just wanted to say that literally this winter is gonna fly. So it's very important to keep a sharp eye on all of these dates, what, what time we have, holiday schedules and how all of that look. You know, sports seasons start picking up, like, like things really start getting really active in the school year. So it's easy for things to slip away, and I just think that it's important that we really focus in on, on all of the items.
I think this is great, thank you so much. And, uh, Jesse, actually a question for you, you mentioned when we did our round the horn about an interest in kind of engaging is with the PTOs, can you just say a little bit more on that?
Absolutely. So, so, so last year, um, we had, um, some families that came with interest about staffing at Janae. And, and, and the idea behind, um, engaging the PTOs sooner at the point in time that they started to engage the board, it was after we really had the ability, um, to, to make, um, substantial changes.
Head pastor.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, so, so I'm wondering, how can we engage them earlier that we can get their input earlier? And, and even thinking about educating them on how the budget process work, um, the best way to advocate, um, for, um, the pieces that they are, they are focused on. Um, so, so I think you had a great conversation, you know, not, 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 you know, um, earlier this year where I learned pieces of how, you know, we as an administration come together to, to decision on how resources are going to split. And I just would love to have that kind of brought to the broader community so that they can understand, you know, how to go about, how to have those conversations. Maybe even we could get ahead of it, you know, by kind of talking about that ahead of time, that, you know, they could know the thought process, who, how, how we supported that process, um, you know, and, and if we could get their buy-in earlier, I think that'd be great.
It may require somebody going to their, their PTO meetings, really, I mean, they're, they're, everyone's busy, so to ask them to come here is probably hard.
Yeah, we do do engagement with, um, PTOs. But typically, it's usually with the budget presentation and, you know, we have a conversation, we, we, um, we do go out and, and do, uh, effectively roadshow, I guess you can call it.
Absolutely. And, and I'm thinking like pro, like pre-process, like, like pre-process engagement, I do hear what you're saying. I'm not saying let's send Jen, I'm just saying that, right? But, you know, however we could figure that out.
Yeah, cause we also go visit like the towns too.
Yeah, for sure.
Is there any other questions on the budget calendar? Okay. Thank you.
So, so what we'll do for the next meeting, we'll, uh, be sure to add the community engagement piece to the budget calendar to make if nothing else, a note in it, we'll tentatively schedule in some spots on community engagement. And we'll bring that forward to the board at the next meeting for adoption of the budget calendar.
Thank you.
Moving on to regular business, um, snow removal bid. Any questions or comments on that?
Are these time and material contracts or firm fixed price? How does that, does that work? Um, was there a move on bikes price? Yeah.
Now, it's a, um, basically, it's a standby all season long. So no matter how much snow we get or don't get.
Yeah.
They get paid.
Got it, okay.
Yeah. We, we had, um, two more than we usually have, we usually only have one, which is good, cause you can actually see that, well, the deal that we've been getting over the open years.
And kudos to you, I mean, I, from the memo, you didn't have to solicit that, right? You, but you did, and I think that's important, so thank you for doing that, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve, RP second, Rob, uh, all those in favor? Um, establishment of professional development presenter planning stipend, any questions or comments on that one? Motion to approve, Sam, second, RP, all those in favor? The cash trust agreement. Any questions, comments? Okay, motion to approve. Sam, second, Kathy, all those in favor? East Green Bush, Central School District Board Goals and Strategic Vision for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
So following discussion on the board goals at our last meeting, we met with the leadership team to try to reflect on the suggestions that were made. Gonna go high level on some of the amendments that we made based on the feedback that you provided. If you look at, uh, the subheadings throughout the document on the blueprint priorities, we tried to clearly define what was included in each priority. And in the subcategories, we tried to do the same thing, I believe it was Ms. Heron had asked. I, I just wanted clarity on what goes together and how the work would, uh, follow sequentially. In trying to address that, not only did we put subheadings, we color coded to try to show what work goes together. The other piece that we tried to do The other piece that we tried to do, um, the timeline piece, I know there were some questions on when would we finish that? So we tried to make sure the phraseology, if you will, was consistent by before ongoing. We tried to clarify that all the way through as well. Some of this as a point of clarification falls in one bucket, if you will. So if you go to blueprint priority number three, long range planning. All this fits together. So it really didn't require us to color code. Communications fits in one bucket. It really didn't, we didn't feel it really required us to color code. And then finally, the last, um, goal in their board governance was something that we had discussed with the planning committee. This did not fall in the blueprint. However, the planning committee felt that work towards a board governance manual or board governance hand handbook was still important. And that is why that goal still remains in there. So again, we tried to reflect on and include all the comments that were shared with us last time to bring this final draft for you for consideration for approval tonight.
Looks good. Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Just on the timeline, I think this is, um, you know, much clearer, like when we get to the board governance piece though, um. Like we, we have some timelines rapidly emerging, like are these start or by, like some of them say, you know, by June twenty twenty six and others just say like November twenty twenty five.
Some of them are ongoing. So the board governance piece, because there's a manual that's already, there's a framework done already. We thought we had some more latitude there to leave it a little bit more broad. I think that's gonna be a lot more refinement than creation, but some of the others where we're a little bit more definitive, yes, it's, it's from ground zero up to be able to get that worked on.
I, I just have a quick comment. Um. I, I definitely love, love the changes to the presentation. I love the work that went into this. I, I just, I just wanted to just, just add, I just love the idea of supporting our educators outside the classroom. Like using our institution as, as, as a support structure, um, for, for holistic wellbeing. Um, you know, I, I, I see that for our students and portrait of a graduate. I want to reiterate that for our educators, um, they handle a lot. They, they do a lot in their own personal time. I think provided that additional support. I mean, it's important just to keep on the radar. Um, I'm, I'm looking for, but, but I thought this looked great and definitely appreciate everything that went into this.
Any other comments?
Oh yeah, I'd actually like to make a quick comment. I noticed in the student experience section at the top here, we have review and update the student's code of conduct policy. And I remember speaking with one of my fellow students about that very issue. So I just really, really appreciate that that's on there. So thank you so much for hearing the voices.
You're gonna look into it?
Uh, well, I, it's already being looked into, it seems by March twenty twenty six. Um, yeah, thank you for having that on there. I think that, that student would really appreciate that. And I know I appreciate that. So thank you so much.
Can I get a motion to approve? Sam, second, RP, all those in favor? And. Yeah, moving on to committee reports.
I thought I would just quit, give a quick update. We had our first professional development committee meeting back in October. But we also had our first professional development half day on October twenty fourth. And I just wanted to report on a few of the offerings we had and I haven't gotten, I've just gotten more feedback informally from people saying they appreciated our, the new spread. The way I proposed and put out the professional development, they felt like it was easier to read. They also had offerings of in-person asynchronous and virtual opportunities. I think, I think the staff appreciate that. There was offerings for a wide range of the, the staff that we serve. So we tried to have food service. We also had our, uh, SRPs. We have teachers. I also had an asynchronous opportunity for our physical education department. And I think I, I wanted to also just put a plug for Arburn came and actually did something for our high school, our students, our L students. How to support them in the classroom in tier one SEL. So a lot of great opportunities. We had top ten AI prompts for the professional and personal. It's, you know, use, which I thought was really helpful and I wanted to be fun engaging and thank you to Peter Goodwin for that. So I, I actually, we have another full day professional development coming up. Two weeks from then. So it's actually, uh, and November tenth and it will be full day and another fruitful opportunities in person asynchronous and virtual. I'll share. Thank you.
We definitely need to kids are home November tenth. I'm just.
All day. And then they have the next day off. It's, it's Veterans Day.
Okay, alright, just checking.
Looking at your work done.
So the last thing that I will be the caboose carrying, uh, the last part of the conversation on the NISBA conference. I'd like to be able to thank the board for allowing me to be able to attend with our newest members. Um, I too was able to attend the, uh, session on, uh, cellphone distraction free learning. Also the athletic, uh, inclusiveness, uh, participation presentation. The last piece I was able to attend on Friday morning was regarding financial literacy. And if we take a look forward on what is to come and graduation measures changes, this is a big component that will be a shift in all of our high schools. My son is twenty one and one of the things that he beats me up on, on a regular basis as a graduate from high school, dad, if you didn't put the checkbook in front of me, I wouldn't know what to do with it. So I think some of the changes that are coming that way, and there was a presentation by the Comax School District. There's a lot of very good things in being able to hear what partner schools from around the state are doing. The collaboration that we were able to have and I'll mirror something that Mr. Temple said, that social time that we were able to have away from the board table. I had a great conversation with Dr. Shane, learning about what he does in the art world. It, it allows us to come back together as a team to work that much more effectively and, and the time was much appreciated. So I'm grateful for the board for not only supporting your fellow board members, but for us, Ms. Morgan, to be able to attend and to be able to do that as well. It, it really was a great exercise, I believe, for all of us. So thank you.
No, it was, I definitely had a good time. I always have a good, like, like, it's, because it's, it's a professional development, but it's also like, there's a social element to it too, right? Like, like really of spending times outside, thinking educate, like it's, it's very education focused. Um, but it kind of takes the pressure of, of, of like the agenda, time and, and kind of really just focus on building relationships, getting to know people. Um, and, and I, I always enjoy, um, getting out and, and doing that and, and, and also understanding like NISBA as a broad and the statewide perspective. Like I definitely thank everyone for, for going up, you know, that's what I could attend and the people that didn't, we look forward to seeing you next year, right? But, but, but.
In Buffalo.
Yeah, in Buffalo for two years.
If it doesn't snow.
Okay, moving on, table motions, right? No old business. On the consent agenda. Any questions or comments?
Quick question. Could, could someone just explain the symphonic, like, like, I just wanna understand what the symphonic. Band is, um, and I understand it's some pretty difficult, um, they're playing at a pretty high level, NISMA level five. Um, which is like, it only goes to level six. And I'll just wonder like what type of instruments, like, you know.
Is it all instruments? It's just a different type of, uh, different style?
Symphonic band is usually your wind instruments, your winds and your brass instruments. It's not, it's not your symphony orchestra, but I think you pointed out, these are, are members that participate in the area all state.
Okay.
And this is an overnight trip to allow them to be able to continue to, to showcase their talents and participate in that process.
So it's high level musicianship that's happening from our students.
Yes, it is. We have the, we have the symphonic band and we also have the chamber singers and we have the chamber orchestras. So there are, those are like three, like select groups of music. You can also be in concert band, um, chorus or.
Jazz band?
Or orchestra. Yep. And then, so yeah, so that's a good point, actually. Jazz band isn't technically a class, but it's a club of kids. So that, that's where you might have like select instruments allowed. So not everybody can be in jazz band depending on your instrument. But in symphonic band, you can, no matter what you play, you can, you can be in it. But yeah, it's not like strings, but yeah, so jazz man's a cool club. And yes, symphonic band is advanced band people.
So I got.
Very cool.
Twin girls, one played a flute, one played a clarinet. So I'm always looking for opportunities for items that they can join in the public ground.
That's the one. They're really good. It's, it's actually, it's, it, I enjoy that. And the jazz band too.
I do believe this is also, the student was actually selected, which is very, uh, very a proud thing. And also we do have a few of our music, uh, teachers that will be attending as well.
And all state is the top, like, that's like the top tier for, for, for scholastic, you know, at the high school level, right? So, so it's like all county, just like all state and you gotta be at a five or six level to, to, to play. And it's like, yeah, that's awesome.
It's not even just the like NISMA level. It's the NISMA score that you get. So like she probably, I would imagine got like near a perfect score, if not perfect, which is extremely difficult.
Yes.
A little crazy stuff.
What does she play?
Lute and piccolo.
Yeah.
Is that in there?
I knew that.
I'm sorry. I saw it.
Thank you so much. I didn't mean this, but that's great.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain the whole thing. Alright, yeah.
So, uh, can I get a motion to approve? Kathy, a second. Sam and all those in favor? And all those abstaining?
I abstained.
Any new business?
She talked me out of it.
Uh, public forum, if you would. Not today, okay. Uh, board forum, we'll start on this side.
Three quick things that, um, this music conversation is really interesting. And last spring, we did a great event where we recognized athletics. And I wonder if we should think about similar recognition for very talented musicians, artists, others. Because we're more than just athletics, right? And I think it's an important part of our school community. So we've got some time to think about it, but we should put that on the, um, on the radar. Um, Rob and I were whispering to each other about the business advisory, um, committee. Dr. Coats, and I think it follows on your comments about financial literacy and, you know, maybe we could have just offline about how to reengage and maybe certain things that are, you know, small businesses could help with in providing sort of guest lectures or other things. I think, you know, we'd be really interested in talking about it. And I think it's also a great sort of pathway, uh, you know, to job opportunities and maybe not, you know, for your schools or connecting our district to the community, which is something we've talked about a lot. Um, and then Jesse, I would just say you brought up the minutes a couple of times and I, I think it's a really interesting idea. Maybe, you know, even just a little email on, um, what we're trying to solve with AI minutes, you know, we've, we often pass them unanimously. Um, like what's the sort of pro con benefit that you're looking for? And maybe we can kind of talk through that.
Absolutely. Well, one, one of the things I'm, I'm thinking about is, um, is, 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 is staff utilization, like, like, it's a thing, it's just like, do, do we really need, right? The scale of minutes that we currently, and I, I hear what you're saying, right? It's not.
It's a great question. I mean, I think we all probably have two versions of that in our workplace. It's, I was just curious where you, maybe there's something, maybe there's more of a recommendation that we can sort of talk through or.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Oh, actually, sorry. Actually, one more thing to say. Um, I feel like I've spoken a crazy amount of times tonight. I don't know. I'm getting more comfortable. So thanks for making me feel comfortable. But I know it's very late. I'll keep this brief. Um, I don't know if you guys are aware, but our school brought back Once Upon a Stage this year. Um, some of my best friends are the directors. And we have our performances on November sixth and November seventh. So November sixth is the teacher performance. So it'll be just teachers watching. The teachers are not performing, you make that clear. The teachers will be people watching. So you guys are all welcome to come to that one if you'd like, or November seventh, or both. Just an idea.
Tell me what Once Upon a Stage is.
Sure. So Once Upon a Stage, good question. It is, we have our regular school musical. We'll still be doing that this year, um, in the spring. But Once Upon a Stage is a review of different numbers from different musicals that we handpicked that we all really like. Uh, we'll be singing and dancing along to those. And then we have, in addition to the big, large group numbers that we have, we have senior solos. So any senior that wants to perform a solo song is welcome to do that for Once Upon a Stage. So it's kind of like a special opportunity, um, with that and.
What time?
It's very.
What time on the Saturday, if you know? Can you send us an email?
Six thirty. I can send everyone an email. I think it's six thirty, but I'll send you, we have like, all information is on one page and I'll send it to everyone. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that. It's gonna be a stellar performance. I'm really super excited that we did this and for my senior year, it feels so special. So I would love to see any, and I'll be there. So thank you.
No, I definitely appreciated hearing from you tonight. That's for sure. Hearing from all of our board members. Um, but no, it's just, it's just great to be here, but that's, that's.
Just one point to what Sam and Rob were talking about. It, it's, you're talking about, we bring people in, you know, I'm a member of the Ed Foundation. We're always trying to give money away. Okay. So if there's somebody that's coming in that wants to speak, but it's a five hundred dollar, you know, fee, please, that's, I mean, to any, I mean, there's no one else, not many people here. But the point is, is that we have a certain amount of money allocated every year for this and we barely get people asking us for it. So if you, you know. Principals know it, but the more people that ask, the more things that we can have. So just keep it in mind as you're thinking about it.
Yeah, I didn't know that. Thanks, Rob.
Rob, is that allocate, is that come within our own budget?
No, no, it's a separate, the Ed Foundation is a, uh, is a five oh one C three associated with the school. We do scholarships, uh, summer enrichments. So your kids should every summer apply for summer enrichment. But so we have a gala. At the end of the gala, we use, we have money that goes to summer enrichment. We always have extra money. And so what we've decided is if we give out five thousand dollars in summer enrichment, but we still have five thousand left, we want to allocate that to the next school year for programs. And it really does become a first come, first served. We're not gonna give one teacher five thousand bucks, but it is tried to get somebody, I think Green Meadow, I don't know if, isn't somebody coming from Green Meadow or they, didn't they already come? Yeah. 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 And there's more money. I mean, that's the thing. So, you know, we're there to support.
Yeah, but my concern is sometimes with state money, you, you use it or you lose it, but you are.
We're not state money. No, it's all donated. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, motion to go into executive session to discuss employment history of particular individuals. Kathy, second. Rob, all those in favor?